All right, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us for today's July 12, 2018, public meeting of the Missoula County Board of County Commissioners. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any public announcements? Any announcements on the part of staff or the commission? Commissioner Curtis?
Just a reminder that Sunday is the marathon, so you might want to avoid quite a few streets if you're not running, but, or go stand along them and cheer.
Thank you. So now is the opportunity for a public comment on non-agenda items. As you might have picked up, on the agenda, if you picked one up as you came in the room, we have four agenda items today, so now's the chance. If there's anything else someone wants to bring to our attention that is not on the agenda, come on up to the microphone. Okay, seeing none. We will take a look at our claims list. This is our claims received as of June 26, 2018, through June 3, 2018, by the Commissioner's office. And the total of claims is $1,222,388.71. And as I've mentioned before, if folks are interested or suffering from insomnia some night, you can go online and drill down into that amount and see all of the expenditures that add up to that $1.2 million.
Commissioner, you said June 3. It's July 3.
July 3, correct. I'm dipping back into the last fiscal year there. Okay, thank you. So we have four hearings. Our first public hearing, which I'll open, is the Larry Farns family transfer. And Lauren, do we have a staff report?
Lauren Miller, Planner with Community and Planning Services. This is a request by Larry Farns to utilize the family transfer exemption to create and transfer one parcel to his daughter. The property is located west of Lolo, south of Highway 12. The current lot today is approximately five acres and is unzoned. The property is within the 2002 Lolo Regional Plan, which designates this parcel as one residential, one dwelling unit per five acres. The proposal we're looking at today would exceed that recommended density. There is one existing single-family residence on the property and a couple of outbuildings. Here's the existing tract of record. The proposed transfer would be on parcel A1B. These tracts were created through an occasional sale exemption. Here's the proposed layout provided by the applicant. The transfer would result in two tracts total. The tract with the existing single-family residence and the outbuildings, which is approximately three acres in size, would remain under ownership by the applicant, Larry Farns. The remaining two acres, the vacant portion of the lot, would be transferred to Larry Farns's daughter. The applicant did note that both of the tracts would be used for residential purposes. The rebuttable presumptions and general evasion criteria were reviewed in the staff analysis for the proposal. A couple of those rebuttable presumptions and the general evasion criteria were applicable to the application that the staff noted and bold in the report. A couple of those rebuttable presumptions that were triggered by the application was if the division appears to be made for the purpose of speculation by the landowner or for resale for the benefit of the landowner by using the grantee as a straw person. This may be indicated if the grantor and/or recipient owns other tracts of land in Missoula County. Jennifer Hetman, Larry Farns's daughter, the intended recipient, owns one other tract of land in Missoula County, according to the Missoula County Property Information System. The second rebuttable presumption triggered by the application was if the proposed division is on a tract previously created through family transfer, mortgage security, or occasional sale exemptions. As I stated before, the proposed division is on a tract that was created through that occasional sale exemption. The general evasion criteria was if the original tract was transferred to the claimant in the past two years. The property was transferred to the claimant in May of 2018. And the last general evasion criteria triggered was if it is incompatible with the growth policy, and as I mentioned earlier, it would exceed that density that is recommended by the growth policy. The proposal was sent to agencies for comment, and there were no comments of concern with the proposal from the county agencies. Staff is recommending that the request by Larry Farns to create and transfer one parcel to his daughter, Jennifer Hetman, be approved. And I have a few questions for the applicant, if he wants to come forward. And if you could state your name for the record?
I'm Larry Farns.
And if you, the...
Hey, Larry, could you hit the on button on the microphone there, please?
I forgot.
No worry.
I should know that.
And your name again, Larry, so we hear.
Larry Farns.
Thank you.
Did you buy the property with the intent of dividing it?
No, I didn't.
Do you or the transferees intend to transfer the property within the next year?
No.
Have you talked to anyone at the county about going through subdivision review?
I did. I talked to Pat O'Hara two or three times, and we figured this was the best way to go. I didn't want more than one house on it. I just, since my wife has passed away, my daughters are watching me like a hawk, and this gets one close enough to see if the lights are on or not.
And will the property be developed?
It will be developed into a residential piece of property owned by daughter and her husband.
Okay. And will the recipient of the property be residing on the property?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes my questions.
Thank you. Larry, anything else you'd want to add at this time?
Nope. It's just a beautiful piece of ground out there, and I love it. It's nice. Back in the country for me.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? Any public comment? This is a public hearing on this proposed family transfer. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I would move that the Board of County Commissioners approve the request by Larry Farns to utilize the family transfer exemption to create and transfer one parcel to his daughter, Jennifer.
I will second that. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we're not insulted if you decide to leave right now.
Yeah. As welcome as you are for the rest of the proceedings, so.
I've got a job to do.
Okay, thank you. So our next public hearing, which actually we opened during our last public meeting and simply recessed so that we could have some additional time to take a site visit and have a little additional thought, we'll continue at this point. So, Tim, did you want to bring us up to speed on either our site visit or anything else that we need to know at this time?
And Dave, as you said, this is continued from the 28th of June. This is Gentry Estates, a five-lot subdivision. Just by way of recap, there are a couple of major issues to sort through today, one being how Glen Eagle Way will be constructed to within about 300 feet of the subdivision. The second major issue being what might the building envelope look like on Lot 5? Just to recap, some amendments adopted by the Commissioners on the 28th. You adjusted the living with wildlife language per Fish, Wildlife, and Parks recommendations. You got rid of a condition regarding the water line that's never been used that crosses through this property. You added some language regarding defensible space information that should be contained in the covenants for the benefit of the homeowners. And you required a defensible space maintenance agreement to be part of the landowner documents. And a possible new condition that was discussed very briefly would be to address language regarding stoves and restrictions within the air stagnation zone related to those stoves. I'll just put this language out for your consideration. This is typically recommended by the Health Department. It wasn't specifically this time around, but Commissioners, if you have interest, here's some of the texts that I would recommend for that. And we can go back to this if needed. So let's start with the building envelope. The original staff recommended building envelope is on the right-hand portion of this slide. It starts at elevation 3778 on the plat. Dale and PCI responded with a building envelope that you'll see as Exhibit A on the left. It starts at about 3770 in that sort of beak-shaped form on the ridge. There's a ridge here that's very advantageous for a building site, and this elevation here is about 3770. The staff recommended, oh. Staff recommended elevations at, again, 3778. We did discuss a compromise elevation of about 3774. And necessarily, condition number three would have to change if there's an alternate graphic to reference, like Exhibit A on the left. So this is what Dale offered last time around on the 28th. And similarly, condition number 14 would have to be amended to reference an exhibit as well. So this is what Dale passed out last time around. And here's that elevation. Wow, this is touchy. I'm sorry. The little blue carrot shows that 3774 compromise elevation, and I believe Dale from PCI has a graphic that shows what a compromise building envelope would look like referencing that A site visit was held two days ago, and it was attended by professional consultants, Fish, Wildlife, and Parks, CAPS staff, Dave Strohmeyer, Commissioner, and a nearby resident. Elevations were staked for the three elevations that I mentioned, 3770, 3774, and 3778. Liz Bradley also discussed elk habitat issues and elk movement from southwest to northeast in general, and she's here today. These are some, oh, there's 3774. These are pictures that Commissioner Dave Strohmeyer took showing, and this would be the compromise building envelope furthest extent, and this is looking south. I don't know if we can find the original.
And Tim, I would just add that...
Yeah, the stakeout there, I believe, was what was reflected on Exhibit A the last time around, which was PCI's or the applicant's proposal last week, or last time we discussed it.
So my understanding is that this would be about 3770 down here, the largest potential building envelope. This is 3774. And this, I assume, is 3770. This would be that highest extent?
I believe so.
This is looking to the north on the property.
And in the last photograph, I believe Dale was 200 feet between the 3774 and the 3770. Does that sound right when you measured that out?
3778.
Right, 3778. Yeah, correct. Okay.
Stepping away from the building envelope for a second, and I believe that PCI has, and Dale, has a response as to the compromise building envelope. But the other major issue to sort through is the off-site road. Again, staff's recommendation was to build this to a 20-foot paved width, and it allowed for some sort of cost-sharing mechanism to actually pay for the improvements. PCI responded with a condition that would emphasize a gravel width and that the cost of construction be shared, shall be shared, by the county and the applicant in proportion to the number of lots benefited by the improvements. And my understanding is that there is another offering by PCI as to this verbiage that is, again, sort of a compromise between the original staff recommendation and PCI. We also discussed the potential for a latecomers agreement as being a cost-sharing mechanism. And this is where one entity essentially pays for their improvements upfront and then is paid back over time as others gain benefit for those improvements, and that could be water lines, sewer lines. In this case, it would be a roadway. We did see some challenges with a latecomers agreement as a potential mechanism, but it was something that was discussed. I did not find personally anything related to Lolo Creek Trails and a latecomers agreement. I looked through that file. I know that's one thing that we had discussed last time around, but John Hart was able to find a latecomers agreement in the Lolo Water and Sewer District that addressed water and sewer connections. There is one new comment that we received this week from Five Valleys Audubon, and it simply expresses support for the original billing envelope recommendation, and there are copies of it on the back table. And I think I'll just conclude with that and let PCI respond with some of their offerings.
Commissioner Curtis?
Tim, could you just state again on the record that while they proposed to have a gravel road, because it's in the air stagnation zone, we can't allow that, right?
Yeah, the air regulations require all new roads in the air stagnation zone to be paved.
Thanks.
Okay. Dale?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I've updated some of the slides from the last presentation. I'll try to, boy, this is, I'm turbo mouse here. So as Tim had said, the prior condition recommended from staff was to pave 20 feet from end of pavement Glen Eagle Way to the intersection with Gentry Way. This shows a graphic of the two portions of road, and it is the yellow portion that is in question in terms of putting the entire responsibility of improving that road on our client, Kirk Gentry, even though the lots that are owned by the county would potentially benefit from those improvements that were installed. And we established that the cost of that, if it were a paved road, would be $117,000, and we offered to pay a proportional share of that, which would be $5,000. And the condition that Tim showed previously, we modified slightly based on conversation at the CAPS update meeting yesterday. And so changes to it would take the county, specifically the reference to the county out of it, and say the cost of construction may be shared by the applicant and other property owners. And by saying other property owners, it's a fact that some of the other property owners are the county, but some are not the county, so it's more accurate in some respects. In proportion to the number of lots benefited by the improvements, and should the applicant agree, road construction may be funded through a rural special improvement district or, we're adding other shared, or other shared cost funding mechanism, and then what we added is such as a latecomers agreement, subject to review and approval, et cetera. So that's our revised amended condition number one. And then the other was condition number three, which, you know, talked about the building envelope, as Tim went over. And as part of the rural cluster open space development standards, which we chose not to pursue because we didn't expect staff to ask for greater than 50% as open space, the calculation would have been 12 acres. We chose not to pursue that path because we found a way to work with the 50-foot sideyard setbacks rather than the 15-foot sideyard setbacks that would be permitted if we set aside 12 acres as open space. And so that was the Exhibit A that was shown there. We went out to the site, as Tim explained, and this graphic shows the staff recommended building envelope and the extension of that to a 3774 elevation. And this is a revised exhibit that you have a copy of, which shows the east boundary as the no-build zone by the steep slope, and then reduces it to 3.6 acres. So that leaves 16.37 acres that would be no-build, no-alteration zone. That results in, so that 3.68 to 16.37 ratio is 70% of the net lotted area would be preserved as open space, which is in excess of the 50%, but we feel like a reasonable compromise, leaving 30% of the net lotted area as developed on. And the advantage of having the 50-foot sideyard setbacks is that the houses themselves, too, would be, allow more room between them and not feel as high a density in terms of the build-out on the lot. That seemed like a reasonable compromise, and so the recommended amendments from our perspective is that it be changed to say the 3.6 acres of lot area as depicted on Exhibit A, the one that I handed out today. And then conversely, for condition number 14, which describes the open space, no-build, no-alteration zone, that that would be described as a 16.37 acres of lot area on Lot 5. So that concludes my additional information. I'm available if you have any questions.
Thanks. Yeah, I have one. So beyond what you presented, any feedback on the burning restrictions verbiage that Tim presented?
I think that's acceptable to our client. That's consistent with what the Health Department is expecting these days, so yes, we would be in agreement with that additional language.
Okay.
I think it's good to have it in the covenants, just because it's one more place. People will see it and not, you know, go buy a used stove at a garage sale and stick it in.
I agree.
And then the other is the condition, as you showed, condition number one, can't say gravel either.
I understand.
Okay.
Any other questions at this point? We could just take these sequentially, beginning with burning restrictions, then move into the building envelope-related conditions and possible amendments. Tim, do you have it lined out for us more systematically than that?
I'll just bring out the text of the...
So, Tim, would that be a new condition, then?
Yeah, it'd be a new condition.
And if anyone's wondering, we'll definitely have time for public comment here, too.
Do you have a number for it, or we'll just say a new condition, and you'll know what was needed?
Yeah, we usually just put them on at the end.
Okay. Are you ready for motions?
Sure, let's do it.
I would move to add a new, this would be in the covenants, right, Tim?
That's correct.
Okay. A new covenant to address burning restrictions, to read language regarding wood, pellet, natural gas, and propane stove restrictions or prohibitions should be included in the covenants or development agreement, subject to Health Department review and approval prior to final plat approval. Language shall reference the requirement for an installation permit from Missoula County Public Works. Approved language shall not be amended or deleted without prior approval of the governing body.
I'll second that. Is there any public comment on this new burning restrictions piece of language? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Condition number one, should we do that one?
I would move to amend condition number one. So is this a whole new sentence? I guess I'll just read it.
Go for it.
To read. Plans for and construction of Glen Eagle Way to a 20-foot, unobstructed, drivable width paved road from the edge of existing pavement to the intersection of Gentry Way shall be reviewed and approved by County Public Works and the City/County Health Department. The cost of construction may be shared by the applicant and other property owners in proportion to the number of lots benefited by the improvements. Should the applicant agree, road construction may be funded through a rural special improvement district, an RSID, or other shared cost funding mechanism, such as a latecomers agreement, subject to review and approval of County Public Works. I think we probably should add in the county attorney's office. What do you think?
Yep.
In the Missoula County Attorney's Office. Road improvements shall be completed prior to the issuance of the first zoning compliance permit.
I'll second that. Is there any public comment on this amended condition? Come on up.
Alan McCormick, representing Kirk Gentry. I should have added this on at the end of Dale's presentation, but I'd like to make a little bit of a push to go ahead and perhaps add as a condition, a commitment from the county to do a latecomers agreement. And I know I talked with John Hart, and he had expressed, I'm sure he's expressed to you as well, some reservations about the challenges of doing a latecomers agreement. And what I understood from him, his primary concern, at least expressed to me, was the challenge in the fact that the only parties who would be a party to that agreement would be the county and Mr. Gentry, and therefore it might be difficult to enforce those provisions against other landowners there who were not party to the agreement. But I found an example that I rather like, and I think Dale provided that to Tim, I think. We had a...
The Lake County one?
The Lake County one, yes. And it looks like that got pushed to you as well. And of course, Lake County has adopted that as part of their subdivision regulations itself. And the reason that I like about it is it creates, kind of like the RSID map that I think Dale had shown in his original presentation, and says, here's all the properties that are likely to be benefited by Mr. Gentry's construction of the road. And in this case, those properties are pretty easy to identify because it's a dead-end road, and it's not likely to be extended anywhere. But if you look at the terms of that agreement, it obligates the county to use its best effort to collect from future developers some proportionate share to be able to pay back the person who does the infrastructure improvements to begin with. So there's an acknowledgement built into it that it's unfair, to a certain extent, to that one landowner bear the entire cost of upgrading a road that benefits multiple landowners. And it obligates the county, then, to try to rectify that by when other people come to develop properties, and the county has a way to do so, it collects then some proportionate share, and there's a... share, and there's a mechanism for getting that funding back to Mr. Gentry, in this case. There's also some nice warnings in there. It warns the person who puts in the infrastructure, you might not get anything back. And there are going to be potentially some circumstances where development could occur, where the county has no ability to collect from them. Perhaps a family transfer of a piece of property or just an existing building permit on an existing lot up there, where you wouldn't have that ability. And it warns the landowner that, hey, we can't collect for that, so don't come and complain to us when we can't get all your money back. So I kind of like it for that regard because it's fair to both sides. It provides some sort of a notice and an obligation on the county to do its best to get some of the money back, and it warns the landowner that you may or may not get some back. So if possible, I'd like to push for going ahead, and instead of leaving it just to a condition here where it says, you can come back later and maybe do this by a latecomers agreement, I don't know quite how that would work. I guess we'd go to the county attorney's office and propose it, and they can bring it back to you in a subsequent hearing or public discussion of some sort to incorporate that, which would be fine. We can certainly try to do that. But if that's something that you're interested in entertaining, I'd like to add it as a condition to the subdivision.
Thank you. And my sense honestly is this is probably as good as it gets at this juncture. When we had this discussion, was it just yesterday? Time flies. John Hart was seeing it for the first time, obviously, and unfortunately, he's not here today. I think he did have some reservations with the example that was shown, and this was kind of our way of trying to show our commitment to helping out with financing, depending on the ultimate disposition of these properties out there, recognizing that, at least at this late hour, we were not completely comfortable with the latecomers template that we saw. So short of delaying this yet again, my sense at least is this is probably as close as we can come to a recognition that you are bearing a lot of expenses right now, and that it does make sense that others who would benefit at a later date would contribute something. Commissioner Curtis, anything?
Yeah, I think our biggest issue is just not knowing how many lots are going to be there. It's hard to figure out where, if you knew there were 20 lots and they all needed sewer, like we've done in Lolo, it's easier to come up with a number. In listening to you, though, I'm wondering if, is there a place maybe, and I know that you need to do infrastructure or guarantee for infrastructure before you finalize or do the final plat. So I wonder if there could be some language there that if they wanted to bring the new company, you know, just to kind of reinforce the latecomers agreement in another place? Because I mean, I think we're plenty willing to sign on to it, and in looking at this, again, I, you know, I can see that there's, that good faith effort by the county doesn't mean we're going to get it, and that's what we've tried to make sure that Mr. Gentry understood. So I kind of like this language here, but if you think of another spot that we could kind of reinforce it again?
Yeah, I don't, I don't mind, I like this language as well, so long as what it means is that we can come back and have a further discussion with the county with perhaps a different proposal or different language in the latecomers agreement, and that you're willing to entertain that discussion at a future date. So, you know, I think I'm reading that into this condition, that it's not sort of just saying, hey, you guys go out and work on it with some other landowner, but that there is, there is an opportunity here to continue that discussion, whether we come back and say, let's start an RSID and see if you'll buy into that, or maybe we can come back and say, remember that subdivision, would you sign on to a latecomers agreement because you now have a better idea of what you want to do with your lots? As long as that conversation can remain open, I think, I think we'd be fine.
Yeah, I believe that that is the intent of this...
Record reflects it, so...
Yeah. Feel free to get a transcript of this meeting where we are saying, yes, indeed, that is our intent. Okay, thank you. Is there any additional public comment on amending condition number one as stated?
Just one. Tim, since you have the ability to type and change, can you strike gravel up above and reinsert paved, so people see that?
Okay, we've had a motion and a second and comment on this. All in favor? Aye. Okay, I guess we will move on to conditions three and 14. Is that correct? So any, I guess at this point, any questions? I do have one question. I see Liz Bradley here from Fish Wildlife and Parks. Liz, could you come on up to the mic, please? And go ahead and state your name for the record.
Liz Bradley.
Okay, thanks. And thanks for joining us out in the field the other day. So based on the walkthrough of the proposed subdivision site, I guess any general reflections? We talked a lot about elk needs in terms of kind of spacing between structures and the fact that this entire area up here, based on radio collar monitoring, is used by elk. I think basically what we're talking about specifically, as opposed to general elk usage, would be it's a 200-foot, basically a 200-foot difference between staff's original proposal and the compromise of the 3774 elevation. And for our purposes today, does that constitute such a significant impact that it would warrant, going back to the original staff recommendation, or just based on your experience up there, is what's portrayed on the screen now, a reasonable compromise?
Yeah, so, so as you know, the elk use this entire area is both wintering ground and as a corridor. The scale of this particular question is, is one that I, I don't foresee having a big difference at a population level for the elk herd. At this point, I think the bigger question is going to be maintaining that corridor, that larger landscape corridor and movement through that Glen Eagle, so those elk can transition from there over to Grant, the Grant Creek side. I do commend the developers on working towards a solution that is clustered and has open space and wildlife considerations, because I think we all can see the wildlife values in this area, not just for elk, but for other wildlife.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Public comment on this particular configuration? Come on up, Ms. Manning.
Hi, I'm Mary Manning, and as a private citizen, I'm here as a, what is it, neighborhood council rep for the Glen Eagle neighborhood, and I'm also somebody who has lived up in the Glen Eagle area for almost three years. I moved from the Rattlesnake. I did send Liz some photos today of the elk use, and I was up on the site visit trip two days ago. And I think, for me, Liz mentioned corridors, what the patterns of movement that I've observed these last three winters really involve moving from, believe it or not, the property just to the east of Grant Creek that has a large hill with a solar tower on it, all the way across the ravine onto the Republic Services Conservation Easement and their private land. So the movement is really from west to east and extending toward the Spurlock property and the NWF property. So the movement is pretty far ranging, and we've observed the elk, and I've tried to document it over the last three years. Whether or not this particular portion of the Grant Creek population crosses Grant Creek seems a little bit up in the air. And Bert Lindler isn't here today, but he's been tracking it, too, along with Liz and others. But for me, what I have a concern about is, as Liz mentioned, this particular minor subdivision in and of itself is probably not problematic, but if we look at it in the larger context, there's a lot of parcels up there that remain sort of uncertain in terms of their level of development. And so I personally love what Dale has done, and I appreciate so much the open space designation, that the area that is designated as open space is very intact grass. And I actually, on a professional level, am a plant ecologist for the Forest Service, so I really do know the vegetation pretty darn well, and so that is huge. But I think it's just the challenge. And so this is more a larger picture, but we have easements up there, the Republic Services easement, Mark Deaton has an easement, we have the NWF land. There's just so much going on, and right now, the elk do move freely. I honestly am not an elk biologist, that's somebody else's job, but I do have the same concerns. Whether or not that distance really makes a difference, I don't know. But I guess I just wanted to let you know that I've been watching them, and I love them, and I love that area, and I know it's not mine, I know it's private land, but I sure appreciate seeing it and being out in it. And I think you saw that two days ago. So that's all I have to say, and thank you for letting me come on the field trip and comment, and I really appreciate it, so thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Any additional questions or comments on this condition? Motion?
Can you put number three up there? Okay, I would move to amend condition number three. Sarah, is it best if I read the whole thing as written, or can I just say, insert and strike? For your... Okay. It's easier for her to type it later. I would move that condition number three be amended to read. The final plat or a related condition of approval sheet shall include a Lot Five building envelope represented by 3.68 acres of lot area. As depicted on the preliminary plat Exhibit A, I would insert as presented on 7/12 of 18. Subject to CAPS review and approval prior to plat approval, the boundary of this delineation shall be depicted in bearings and distances. All areas outside the building envelope on Lot Five shall be designated as open space slash no build slash no alteration zone. O S N B A Z. See covenants for details. The covenant shall be amended to include an explanation of this area with an appropriate exhibit as an attachment with language subject to CAPS review and final approval prior to plat, final plat approval.
I'll second that. Any additional comment? And I would just like to thank Mr. Gentry and PCI for working on this compromise. Having visited the site out there, with the exception of the ravine on kind of the eastern edge, it's all highly developable, more so than I realized from just looking at the plat here before me. It really did help getting out there on the site, so I think the amount of open space that is being reserved, and particularly that southern end of the ridge, will be beneficial for wildlife passage. So motion and a second, public comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Number 14.
Okay. Condition 14.
I would move to amend condition number 14 to read, the following shall be added to the covenants or development agreement, subject to CAPS review and approval prior to final plat approval. The 16.37 acres of lot area on Lot Five is an open space, no build, no alteration zone, which is also depicted on the plat and on the attached Exhibit A, again dated July 12, 2018. This open space, no build, no alteration zone is for low-impact use, defined as the prohibition of all buildings, structures, except wildlife-friendly perimeter fencing, utilities, except for public utilities, to be located within utility easements, as depicted on the Gentry Estates plat, drain fields and wells, and service lines to drain fields and wells, parking, roads, motorized vehicle access, except for the construction, use, maintenance, and repair of utilities, as depicted on subdivision plat or conditional approval sheet, storage, or any other development. That is a very long sentence. It is also, it shall also prohibit any mining, cutting, burning, or removal of live vegetation, except as needed for wildfire prevention, noxious weed control, or conservation management. Filling with substances such as gravel, soil, slash, or other debris, or the planting of non-native vegetation such as lawn grasses.
I'll second that. Any public comment on amended condition number 14?
I do have one question. Would that mean, then, that they couldn't, like, burn dead grass, or is that considered wildfire prevention? If you, like, you know, did a spring or fall burn kind of thing? As permitted by, you know, whatever the air regs are in the...
Yeah, we have the category of conservation management, which I think could include things like that. And it's not that we, that the county necessarily has the ability to police that down to the, to fine degrees.
Okay.
So there's some discretion there.
It seems like that parenthetical "except as needed for wildfire prevention," et cetera, would cover that, perhaps.
Yeah, and conservation management.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Motion's been made. I'll second that. I've had public comment. All in favor?
Aye.
So, Tim, oh, okay. You should probably have some, something between Exhibit A and dated, just for your own.
Might that be a comma?
Comma or dash or something.
Okay. So I guess now we have the main motion related to the overall subdivision.
Right.
Do you have a slide for that, Tim?
Ironically, I do not.
I think we have it here. Looking.
That might work.
Yeah, we can just use one top.
Okay, we got it.
As amended, right?
Sure.
I would move that the Board of County Commissioners approve Gentry Estates subdivision as amended at both public hearings, based on the findings of fact in the staff report, subject, and public comment, and subject to the recommended conditions of approval as amended.
I will second that. Any additional public comment on this? And for the record, the public hearing is now closed. We've had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, and thanks for granting the extension last week. I think that was useful. Next, we have the Manley subdivision, which I'll open a public hearing on, and we'll begin with a staff report from Casey Drayton.
Manley Minor Subdivision. Casey Drayton, planner with Community and Planning Services, here to present the Manley Minor Subdivision. This is an application by Jeanette Manley, the property owner, represented by Montana North... by Montana Northwest Company. We have Ken and Lynn here with Montana Northwest Company today representing them. The project location is at the southwest corner of Waldo Road and Highway 93, just north of the Y and Interstate 90. Looking at the site here, we have just over six acres, as you can see right on that corner of the intersection there. Approximately half the property's been developed previously, half of it is just sort of open dryland grasses. This photo kind of reflects that area out near the corner, just taken from the Google Street View to show you what that looks like. And then tucked back into the trees would be that development that we can see from overhead. The Manley subdivision is proposed as a three-lot minor subdivision. These, this is a rough outline of what those lot lines would look like laid over the aerial. We would end up with two lots hosting existing uses on the property and one vacant lot upon subdivision. And this is a grab of the preliminary plat, just to show you again what that would look like. This does have the existing office building, the existing home, and then a proposed home designated on lot number one showing there, in addition to all of the necessary easements, driveways, and things like that, utilities on there. Looking into the review criteria for subdivisions, first, we're going to look at the zoning and growth policy compliance. We find that this is compliant with the zoning designation, as well as the comprehensive plan, land use designation for the area. It's designated at 25 dwelling units per acre residential, as part of the 79 YO Keefe Creek Area Plan, and then zoned CR2 residential. This was just zoned in 2018, so it was a recent zoning on the property that was the closest designation to that 25 dwelling units per acre. That's a maximum of 16 dwelling units per acre in the CR2. We find that the proposed Manley subdivision is compliant with the minimum lot size, width, setbacks, density, future development. We'll go through zoning compliance review. The comp plan calls for density that's a little bit greater than zoning, but it also identifies this as a primary area for residential development. The comp plan first looks at the east side of Highway 93 as the primary area for development out in this Y area, and then a second tier of development coming off the west side. So, that's what we would be looking at here. Does recommend access off secondary roads, so Waldo Road would be that secondary road in this case, with then driveways or internal access roads, similar to what you see in the Malametos subdivision located just to the west of this proposed Manley subdivision. The density with three single-family or used lots is well below that maximum 16 dwelling units per acre, so it could be a common question as to why they're proposing three lots here. That develop, or density could be met with some sort of a multifamily dwelling or something like that on Lot 3, the vacant lot, or redevelopment of Lot 1 or 2. That could get them closer to that 16 dwelling units per acre if they had all the other necessary infrastructure to support it. Next up, we'll look at ag and ag water user facilities. There's four soil types on this property. All of them are considered farmland of local importance or prime farmland, if irrigated, so we do have good soils here to support agriculture. Looking at the current conditions of the site on this overhead view, we can see that half of it's already been developed in kind of a domestic nature with the grasses and trees and things. The other half could potentially be used for agriculture, however, it's just over three acres, so it wouldn't be part of a huge agricultural enterprise. There are no surface water rights or irrigation facilities associated with this property, so it would make agriculture pretty difficult to achieve here. The comprehensive plan and zoning do place more emphasis on residential development, as we just went over. Ag is a permitted use under zoning, so if somebody did want to, at some point, develop that Lot 3 with a residential dwelling and a small sort of residential nature farm around it, they could, or they could just come in and farm it. So, that option still is on the table. It doesn't take it away if they felt they had the acreage and water to support some sort of an ag use there. Looking into the local services for this subdivision, Waldo Road will provide the access. That road's currently under reconstruction by Montana Department of Transportation. They would oversee all aspects of that road from this point forward. The, there's two approaches out to Waldo Road. One of those is going to be a shared approach for Lot 1 and Lot 2. And then Lot 3 will have its own individual approach, which has been existing. They'll be reconstructed with the reconstruction of the road. The obligation to reconstruct those approaches is on MDT as part of a right-of-way acquisition that they went through. So, they'll be completing those improvements along with the road, which is probably sometime later this fall unless the project gets pushed further than that. There was some language on the preliminary plat and in the covenants that had to do with tying the approach construction to building permits, and because it's MDT approval and not County Public Works, after speaking with County Public Works, we've recommended to strike that language off the plat, as well as from the covenants, to keep MDT approvals separate from the county approvals in this case. There's no pedestrian facilities proposed with the subdivision. It's a minor subdivision, so it's not required. There will be a new pedestrian trail on the north side of Waldo Road, so if these residents were to cross the road, they could access all the way out to French Town. It ends at Highway 93, though, so it wouldn't necessarily take them back towards the Y in any manner. Lot 1 will have a new well for domestic and irrigation purposes for the water supply. That's indicated by a little blue arrow, or blue circle showing down here on Lot 1. Lots 2 and 3 utilize two wells. Those are both shared wells for both of the existing uses on the properties. The domestic water supply comes from an off-site well. The representative has worked to secure the necessary easements to comply with subdivision regulations for the off-site well, so those have been recorded with the county at this point in time. And then there is one more well on the property located on Lot 2 that'll be used for irrigation, lawn and garden purposes, and that'll be a shared well between Lot 2 and 3. There is a condition of approval about creating a shared well maintenance agreement for that one. All the lots here will be served by city sewer. That connection's been approved. That line will be ran out to the property. There was a septic system serving the existing development, and that'll be abandoned with that connection. Solid waste will be managed by Republic Services. No parkland is required or proposed with this minor subdivision. This is located in the French Town School District, and impacts the district have not been identified and are not anticipated. French Town Rural Fire District serves this property. We do have a kind of a remote station just across Waldo Road on Lady Slipper, so it's within, I think, three tenths of a mile, so fairly close there. And they're proposing residential fire sprinklers for any new construction as the chosen water supply for fire suppression, and police protection will be available in a manner consistent with the location and distance to the nearest responder. Looking at the natural environment, wildlife, and wildlife habitat, I think this kind of zoomed-out aerial tells it best that concerns over the impact to the natural environment, wildlife, and wildlife habitat have not been identified or are not anticipated, mainly due to the location in a kind of heavily developed area or developing area with the major transportation corridors in close proximity. Looking at public health and safety, covenant language on radon and fireplaces has been added. Other health and safety concerns have not been identified or are not anticipated with this subdivision. It's not in flood plain. There's no steep slopes associated with it. We found that it is compliant with the survey requirements, subdivision regulations, and review procedures, has all the necessary easements to serve utilities to each of the lots, and they are served legal and physical access from Waldo Road. And staff recommends that the subdivision be approved based on the findings in the staff report, subject to the recommended conditions of approval found in the staff report. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Casey. Would the applicant or applicant's representative like to address us?
Good afternoon. Ken Jenkins with Montana Northwest Company. I'd like to thank Casey, Tim, CAPS Office, through the zoning and then the subdivision. They've been very helpful. We concur with the recommendations and the conditions, and I am happy to answer questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you, Ken. All right, this is a public hearing, although it looks like the number of public is a little thin in the audience here today. So, is there anything else anyone would like to share? Seeing that, I'll close the public hearing. Questions or discussion or a motion from the commission?
I think this one's pretty straightforward. So, I would move that Manley subdivision be approved based on finding fact in the staff report, subject to recommended conditions of approval in the staff report.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Ken, would you like to recycle these books? Do you use them?
Just giving them away. I'll take them.
We just stack them up and end up trying to recycle all the paper.
Thanks. Okay, we've lost someone who is necessary for the next item. Yeah, please, if you could send, send them in.
Do we want to wait for Jeff?
No.
All right, I guess I'll look to you, since there's nobody else to address here.
Yeah, we've, we've given them his chance, so, yeah, let's go ahead. Next, I will open a public hearing on AKB Commercial Minor Subdivision with a staff report by Casey Drayton.
Casey Drayton here to present the AKB Commercial Minor Subdivision. The applicant for the subdivision is AKB Investments, represented by WGM Group, and we should have Jeff Smith here shortly with WGM Group. The project location is located at the Y area. This one is just north of Interstate 90 and east of Highway 93. This is track 2B2A of COS 6455. We have about 17 acres out here proposed on the subdivision. What's proposed is a five-lot minor subdivision. This is overlaid over sort of the existing conditions. You can see there is a existing building on proposed Lot 1. The rest would be vacant upon subdivision. This gives you a little bit clearer picture of what that looks like. The developments around that building has kind of sprawled out over time unofficially, so, other than that, though, primarily vacant, there is some disturbance, some two tracks and things across the property. These are some pictures that I took last year. I guess I should note why the pictures were taken last year, was the subdivision did come forward on August 24th of last year. The hearing was continued to an unannounced date. Today's the first day. It's backup republic hearing. This did go through a subsequent adjacent property notification and agency notification to let everybody know that it was coming back to the hearing here today. So, these pictures were taken prior to that original request. They do kind of show the lot, like I mentioned, fairly undeveloped. You can see in the bottom left, some of that sprawl out from that existing building that's there. There's some trucks and things parked there. Other than that, it was primarily dryland grasses and kind of a smoky day out there, it looks like. The subdivision proposed, as mentioned, is five lots. Most of the lots are around an acre or two. However, Lot 4 is proposed to be just shy of 10 acres. Keep in mind, this plat has north to the left-hand side of the screen, so Lot 4 will stretch all the way down to the south to Interstate 90. Looking into some of the review criteria, this is part of the 2005 Y-Mullen West Area Plan. This property's been designated as commercial light industrial, and the zoning is CC2 general commercial. So, everything we see out in this area is pretty consistent with the zoning, which is consistent with the growth policy and comprehensive plan. The proposed layout complies with the zoning requirements. Any new development will be reviewed for zoning compliance at time of building permits submitted. There's no lot width, and minimum lot requirements only come into play with residential use and commercial. However, all these lots would meet the 3,000-square-foot minimum lot size. We're well over that. The comp plan calls for commercial and industrial use that relies heavily on highway transportation, and I feel that's the type of use that's going to show up on sort of these larger, general commercial lots out here. Ag and ag water user facilities, we do have a few soil types on this property that are considered farmland of local importance or farmland of statewide importance, so we do have some sort of viable agricultural soil according to mapping. Looking at the previous development, site disturbance, that's fairly evident from a site visit or from the aerial photography that we're seeing. It looks unlikely that agriculture has ever been done out here on this property. The only type of agriculture that's been possibly utilized in the area or on adjacent properties or anything would be some sort of grazing. There's no agricultural water user facilities associated with this property, and based on the zoning and comprehensive plan, this area has clearly been designated for heavier commercial or light industrial use as opposed to agriculture. Looking into the local services, roads are sort of the major consideration and topic of discussion with this project. This was the reason why the hearing was continued from August of last year. Looking at this first shot on the screen, you can see Carriage Road up there is the nearest public, county-maintained right-of-way in the vicinity. That's serving primarily all the development out there. However, all of the properties to the south there that you see, all the lot lines are showing, utilize kind of a confusing network of private access easements to get there, and not all the properties utilize the same private access easements. Some are allowed on some, some aren't on those, and they have their own and things like that. So, it gets fairly confusing pretty quickly when you start digging into it. I've put together this graphic to try and put some simplicity to what's going on, primarily with the AKB subdivision here. So, coming off Carriage Road, we have an existing private access easement. It's an off-site road. They're proposing no improvements to it. That would be Aluminum Road as it stands today. Then you get down onto the AKB property, so onsite roads or partially onsite, partially offsite, shared with the adjacent property owners through easements. And AKB Commercial is proposing the red line there, which would be a new road configuration. That would be paved to 32 feet wide, parking along one side. That road would then become a public road, which would help out with the road network out here. If the future yellow area ever was to become public, it would open up a nice connection for the property owners that are located down to the south and east of AKB Commercial. The green lines represent existing roadways that are out there. They're private roadways. AKB Commercial has two variance requests associated with these roads. These would be treated then as secondary access roads for AKB Commercial. They would be the primary access for some adjacent properties. The two property owners down here utilize legal access through Sparkler Lane all the way up to Carriage, and the property owner just to the north of AKB utilizes driveways that come out onto Stainless to then get over to Aluminum and back to Carriage. So, it's unlikely that the Sparkler or Stainless Way will ever be utilized as primary access, because Sparkler becomes a 20-foot access easement, so if anybody wanted to develop further down, they'd have a tough time ever getting a road up to standards, getting out of there with that narrow easement. So, staff is recommending approval of the two variance requests to basically leave those roads as they are to serve as secondary access. They are asphalt milling surfaces, so it's a step above gravel, I guess you could say. If you go out there and stand on it, it feels kind of like asphalt, just maybe a lesser quality of it. And then, all the lots within AKB will be served by the new 32-foot-wide asphalt road. And that's represented on the preliminary plat. Again, this is turned sideways, but you would come down Aluminum Road, and you would hit this newly-developed road. Then you would have one turn onto Running W, which would continue on to adjacent properties, and ultimately make a connection further out to the north once you wrap around the development that's out there. Then, you can see here, Stainless Way and Sparkler Lane are designated as secondary access roads. These would serve kind of like an alley, but a true kind of roadway designation and request a variance to it. With having the secondary access on lots 1 and 2 and a primary access on Running W Road adjacent to lots 1 and 2, we do end up with a through-lot situation, which is the subject to the third variance request for the subdivision. Through-lots can be approved and mitigated with some conditions generally or offerings by the applicant such as landscaping, no build zones, access restriction, things like that, or they have the ability to just request a variance to through-lot standards to say, you know, there could be access there. They don't want to put in the landscaping, things like that, and that's the case here. Talking with Jeff, I think we felt that the commercial use on these properties could benefit potentially from, you know, in secondary access if they have a truck that needs to get around the back or something of the buildings. They would have that ability to do so. They would be public roadways. However, anyone coming down would use the logical new paved road, primary access of Aluminum and Running W. This is what the surfaces of those roads are. We have Stainless Way showing on the top photo. You can see it. It almost looks like it's paved. And then Sparkler Lane over here on the bottom photo, the same situation there. In addition to the roadways, there's no pedestrian facilities proposed. It's a minor subdivision. They're not required. All lots are served by city sewer, and they'll also be served by the Y-area water system, a public water supply. Solid waste will be managed by Republic Services. No parkland. Dedications required or proposed. The property is split between the Dismet and French Town School Districts. Impacts to the district have not been identified. This is commercial in nature, so it's not anticipated that there's going to be residential development. However, the commercial CC2 designation does allow for residential development in some contexts, so we don't want to entirely rule out the possibility. It's just not contemplated at this point in time. There was one comment early on, kind of in the second round of subdivision review from Dismet Public Schools, inquiring about where all the people are going to live that work in this commercial subdivision and how buses were going to get through, but they've offered up a public access through here that'll be better than and safer than what's there currently. So I felt that those concerns had been addressed in a pretty appropriate manner. French Town Rural Fire District serves this property. They're proposing a hydrant within the subdivision that'll have the necessary flows from the water supply. Those are that hydrant location, and specs would be reviewed and approved by the county fire inspector. Prior to final plat approval, as a condition, police protection would be considered adequate based on a lack of response for agency comments. Looking at the natural environment, wildlife and wildlife habitat, similar to the last subdivision we looked at, based on the location in close proximity to the interstate as well as surrounding commercial development and Highway 93, we felt there's not a whole lot of concerns over wildlife, wildlife habitat. Weed management plan and revegetation plan is proposed, and we've recommended a few conditions to kind of tweak what the applicant had proposed to control any sort of noxious weed presence on that site, since it has been disturbed. It's likely that that could occur out there on some of those larger tracks. Looking at public health and safety, a small area of the property is over 25% slope. That area has been designated as a no-build zone. That's at the far southern extent, right adjacent to Interstate 90. So that'll show up on the final plat as a no-build zone. Portion of the property is within the airport influence area. They've put a note in the covenants as well as on the preliminary plat to notify lot owners of the airport influence area. Staff's recommending a condition that requires navigation easement, which is fairly common with property in the airport influence area, to restrict development from going up too high. There is covenant language on radon and fireplaces and other health and safety concerns have not been identified and are not anticipated with this subdivision. We find that this subdivision complies with survey requirements, subdivision regulations, review procedures, provisions of easements for utilities, and provisions of legal and physical access. And with that, staff's recommending approval of three variances, two to the road standards, one for Sparkler Lane, one for Stainless. Approval of the variance for through-lots and approval of the subdivision, subject to the conditions of approval. With that through-lot variance request, staff has inserted one condition of approval that relates to that, and that is if residential development ever is to occur on Lot 1 or Lot 2, that they comply with the through-lot mitigation requirements. So they would increase maybe a setback or put some landscaping in, things like that, so that you don't have residential development wholly surrounded by roads there. That's all kind of a what-if. If it's commercial development, staff would be recommending approval to just let the lots sit as they're shown on the preliminary plat. And that concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Casey. Would the applicant's representative like to present? Mr. Smith?
For the record, Jeff Smith with WGM Group here representing AKB Investments. I'd like to thank Casey and all the staff at the county for their work on this project over the past decade now. We've had several different versions of this come forward, and I think what we have now is an optimized version that creates an efficient five-lot subdivision with efficient infrastructure, connection to city sewer and connection to public water, as Casey ran through. Casey covered almost everything on this project, but I wanted to highlight the access. As Casey mentioned, we were scheduled for a public hearing last August. A few days before that hearing, we heard from one of the neighboring property owners that they had an issue with our original proposal. The original proposal called for the alignment of Aluminum Road and Running W Road to connect and improve the circulation and access to and through the site, and along with that, we were planning on abandoning the portion of Sparkler Lane that's adjacent to the project and through the site. After discussing with Eminem Land Holdings Company, who own the two lots directly south and to the east of our site, probably easier to see on this exhibit, these lots here. We spent a few months with them trying to determine the best approach here, and at the time, our approach was we think that Sparkler Lane serves, doesn't serve much of a purpose for access and probably would be best vacated so that the entire area could get together and work on maintaining Aluminum and Running W Road as a group. After extensive conversations with them, we came to the conclusion that perhaps leaving Sparkler Lane as it is is best for everyone at this time, and rethinking things, it does provide an improved road network, I believe, at the end of the day. We treat Stainless Way, which is this portion here, and Sparkler Lane, which is this portion here, as secondary access at the end of the day, functioning as an alley for these industrial lots, commercial lots, and we've got improved emergency and improved utility access for the lots. When we resubmitted this, Casey and I talked quite a bit about whether a through-lot variance was, would be required for Stainless Way, and my take was that it served as an alley, which does not require a through-lot variance per the county subdivision regulations. Our final conclusion after discussing that in some detail was that because it does serve as an access for some of the adjoining lots, that we should treat it as a secondary access rather than an alley and request the variance to be thorough. With that, our client is really excited to move forward with this and is happy to be where they are now. Thank you for your consideration and happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. There is no one from the public remaining, so I'll close the public hearing. Any additional questions?
Yeah, I have two for Jeff. So is the Lot 1, that's where that existing building that Casey showed the photo sits?
That is. That's occupied by Neptune Aviation right now.
Oh, okay. And then is there a reason? I don't care, but is there a reason why Lot 4 is big? Is it partly because of topography, or do you have potential use that somebody'd need bigger lot or?
The thought was that we wanted one large lot for a potential large user, and what that end user ends up being is unknown at this time, but there were a few folks that were after lots the size of Lot 2, Lot 3, and Lot 5, and Lot 4 felt like it would be appropriate for a big use.
I was just curious.
Okay.
Thanks for putting all the effort into this, both staff and you as representing your client, I think focusing on road networks is important, so this is good.
Should we deal with the variances?
I would move that the request to vary from Missoula County Subdivision Regulations Table 3.4.7 road standards requiring improvements to Sparkler Lane from an asphalt milling surface of 32 feet wide to a paved road 26 feet in width be approved based on finding in staff report.
Second that. Any additional discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I would move that the request to vary from Missoula County Subdivision Regulations Table 3.4.7 road standards requiring improvements to Stainless Way from an asphalt milling surface varying from 24 feet to 32 feet in width to a paved surface of 26 feet in width be approved based on the findings of fact in the staff report.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. I would move that the request to vary from Missoula County Subdivision Regulations Sections 3.3.2.4 prohibiting through-lots be approved based on the finding of fact in the staff report, subject to the recommended condition of approval.
Second. Any additional discussion? All in favor? Aye.
And I would move that AKB Commercial Subdivision be approved based on finding of fact in staff report, subject to the recommended conditions of approval in the staff report.
Second. Any additional discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Commissioner Curtis earned her salary today with all the reading that we had to do, so... All right. Any other business before the commission? Seeing none, we will be in recess.